I'm ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is December the 7th, 2020. Time is now 7:00 PM. I call to order a meeting of the Havertide Grace Mayor and City Council. I will now call the roll. Council President Glenn. Councilmember Robertson. Councilmember Zinner. Councilmember Boyer. Councilmember Ringsucker. Councilmember Martin. All councilmembers are present and accounted for. Please join for pledge allegiance and opening prayer. I could ask everybody to kindly remain standing as I call upon Councilmember Ringsucker to read the opening prayer submitted by Father James Snodgrass, pastor of St. John's Episcopal Church. Councilmember Ringsucker.
Let us pray. Oh holy Lord, visit us tonight in this Advent season with your Holy Spirit. Prepare us. I am on. Let me restart. Let us pray. Oh holy Lord, visit us tonight in this Advent season with your Holy Spirit and prepare us for new beginnings. Stir us up that we get carried away to do what you call us to do that we've not yet done, loving our neighbor in new ways, ways in former days from which we often cringed. Come Emmanuel and save us. Oh God of love and suffering power, we speak your word that creates things anew in the midst of our weary world. Break the vicious cycle of calling evil good and good evil, of putting darkness for light and light for darkness, says the prophet Isaiah, and kindle us once again a passion for the possible. May we welcome the Messiah in our midst. Come Emmanuel and save us. Oh God of healing and comfort, we lift you up nearly 15 million fellow citizens infected with this vicious coronavirus pandemic and nearly 300,000 who have died from it. And we lift up thousands and thousands who have worked to the breaking point caring for the sick and dying. Fill us with your word of hope that we are in this together and anchor our trust that you are not done with us yet. Come Emmanuel and save us. Come, oh light of the world, to those who sit alone in empty rooms, who suffer from the pain of hunger and grief, who live with anxiety and fear, and invite them into God's communities of love in our churches and our houses of prayer here this night. Come Emmanuel and save us. Oh God of living and dead, on this Pearl Harbor Day, guide and protect all men and women of our armed forces. We give thanks for their service and ask that your presence be with them always. Come Emmanuel and save us. Make of us a fitting dwelling place for you, merciful Savior, a place of new birth, a harbor of peace, a haven of grace, a place of welcome to all, a community of your unending love. Come Emmanuel and save us. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Ringsucker, thank you very much. And I want to thank Father Snodgrass for the submission of the prayer. We miss you in the chambers, Father Snodgrass, but we know we'll be here soon, back together. So thank you for taking the time to give us your words. We'll move on to item number five, approval of minutes. Council meeting minutes, November 16th, 2020. Council to have a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Zinner, second by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Council meeting minutes from November 16th, 2020 are approved, 6-0 in the affirmative. Item B, closed session minutes of November 16th, 2020, do I have a motion to approve?
Removed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Boyer, second by Councilmember Ringsucker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to approve closed session minutes of November 16th, 2020, carries 6-0 in the affirmative. Item number six, comments from citizens on agenda items. Mr. Seipolt, do we have any citizens that submitted questions or comments?
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, we do. We have one comment submitted from Mr. Joe Kokenderfer of 819 Tidings Road. All, to all, regarding item 11B on tonight's agenda, resolution concerning 212 North Washington, on line 107, I recommend that it include poll and supports in addition to sign. Thanks and keep safe. Joe Kay, 819 Tidings Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. Seipolt. Or any other comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any comments from council on agenda items? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Seipolt. Thank you, council. We will move on to item number seven, appointments. This evening, we have no appointments. Item number eight, recognition. This evening, we have no recognitions. Item nine, proclamations. This evening, we do have a proclamation. We have one proclamation, and it happens to do with a local Havertide Grace business achieving the anniversary date of 90 years. And that would be the Galls Bakery. Galls Bakery, last week, and I believe December 3rd was the date, noted their 90th anniversary in business and in the city of Havertide Grace. It's a family-owned business. It needs no introduction for people who are from Havertide Grace or live in Havertide Grace. And I know that the council president wanted to say a few words, and I'll let any other council member speak if they want to speak about the anniversary of Galls. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did send a note of personal congratulations to the Galls family this week. I remember moving here in 1967, and I always looked forward to every Saturday. My dad would take me down to Galls, and we would get cinnamon buns, we'd get the marshmallow filled donuts, we'd get the eclairs, and of course, those famous tarts that the Galls family has always made each and every week. I gotta say, 90 years of a family business in a small town is truly an outstanding accomplishment. It's an outstanding achievement, and it's a tremendous milestone. And to the Galls family, thanks for all you do. Thanks for all you did for the city of Havertide Grace, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other council member wish to say a comment on Galls Bakery? Councilmember Zinner?
Sorry about that. Okay, I did have an opportunity to call in for that Zoom meeting, and he was, it was so nice to see how surprised and overwhelmed he was with the support. And you could see in the background, several people were there, and there was music, and then they... Sorry about that. Okay, I did have an opportunity to call in for that Zoom meeting, and he was, it was so nice to see how surprised and overwhelmed he was with the support, and you could see in the background, several people were there, and there was music, and then there were several people on the phone, relatives and friends, and Mary Ann Lasante presented a proclamation virtually. I talked about our proclamation, and I believe Patrick Vincente was there for the county. I couldn't make out who it was exactly who was speaking, so. And then there was comments by, somebody delivered comments for county executive glass. So it was, it was very nice. He was, he was surprised. He said he wasn't expecting all the people who were there, and he was just told to go to the bakery that morning. So it was a nice tribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zinner, and thank you for attending. Any other councilmember wish to speak on the proclamation of Gauls Bakery? If you allow me, I would like to read the proclamation into the record. City Havertagh Grace, Maryland, proclamation for Gauls Bakery. RAs Gauls Baker of Havertagh Grace, Maryland is a family-owned, old-fashioned, German bakery and has been a Havertagh Grace tradition since nineteen thirty. RAs Eugene and Elsa arrived from Stuttgart, Germany via Philadelphia, ages eighteen and seventeen respectively. Met and married in Philadelphia, Eugene and Elsa Gaul arrived in Havertagh Grace on their honeymoon weekend and wasted no time opening their bakery on December first, nineteen thirty. RAs both Eugene and Elsa were from German baker families and learned the bakery business from childhood. Their delicious pastries, family recipe, quality ingredients, and strong work ethic created the success that has maintained the business for ninety years. Now therefore, I, William T. Martin, Mayor of the city of Havertagh Grace, along with the Havertagh Grace City Council members, do hereby dedicate proclamation to Gauls Bakery for the many years of dedicated service. Signed by myself and the members of the Havertagh Grace City Council, and tomorrow, we will have our economic development director, Ms. Quisenberry, deliver this to Mr. Gaul. I want to congratulate personally Mr. Gaul for his hard work and dedication, service to the community. So, thank you very much, council. Well done to Gauls Bakery. Thank you. Item number ten, presentation. This evening, we have no presentations. Item number eleven. Resolution. We have two resolutions this evening. The first resolution is going to be handed off to Council President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to introduce resolution concerning the establishment of a policy for entering leases and licensing related to city right-of-ways, property, or structures, and I must note that this replaces resolution two thousand seven dash ten.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right, council have a motion by council president, seconded by Councilmember Ringsucker. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Questions or comments on the council president's introduction? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduce a resolution carries six zero in the affirmative. Council, this is going to be resolution number two thousand twenty dash twenty-one. Counter resolution concerning establishment of a policy for entering leases and licenses related to the city rights of way, property of structures, and this replaces resolution two thousand seven dash ten. A resolution by the city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to section four, thirty-three, thirty-four, and seventy-six of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland to establish a policy for entering leases and licenses related to the city rights of way or structure. Council to have a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments on the resolution? CP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution is designed to put in place a consistent policy with regard to entering into licenses and leases with respect to city-owned property. It applies to any leases or licenses executed by the mayor after the date of this resolution. The maximum term for any lease or license shall be fifty years in accordance with the city code and the city charter, but in most cases, the period of time would be for a much shorter period of time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council president, for your comments. Any other questions or comments on the resolution? Okay. Council, this is a resolution. I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsucker.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Our roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative. Council resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-one, establishing policy for entering leases and licenses on city rights of way, is adopted by council, six zero in affirmative. Thank you, council. We will go to item B, counter resolution concerning license agreement for two twelve North Washington Street. Councilmember Ringsucker.
Mr. Mayor, council, citizens at home, make a motion to introduce calendar resolution concerning license agreement at two twelve North Washington Street.
Second.
Council have a motion introduce resolution by Councilmember Ringsucker, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. This is a motion to introduce a resolution concerning license agreement at two twelve North Washington Street. Questions or comments on the introduction of the resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce a resolution carries six zero in the affirmative. Council, this will be resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-two. Counter resolution concerning license agreement at two twelve North Washington Street, a resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the annotated, oh, I'm sorry, sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter and the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland authorized the mayor to enter into a license for replacement of a sign on city right-of-way on two twelve North Washington Street. Council have a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsucker, seconded by Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Was it? Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Zinner. Questions or comments on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, council, this sign is for the business glyph. It's not a new business. They're restarting after relocating from St. John's, the old bank, over to McLehaney's Rock Shop, whatever, whatever iteration of business has been in there. It's a very attractive sign. It actually does not impede traffic at all. It's over the street where the old sign was, but because it actually juts out from the building over the city sidewalks, it requires a lease agreement for right-of-way, and it's a very attractive sign, nice little shop, and I ask everybody to please vote for it. Oh, I do have an amendment, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we amend line one oh seven F, where it currently reads, "The sign shall be removed." I want to change that to say, "The sign, comma, to add comma, poll and supports." And so it's gonna, what I'm adding is, comma, poll and supports. So the new reading shall be, "The sign, comma, poll and supports shall be removed upon the business ceasing operation at this location."
Second.
Line one oh seven, sir.
I'm sorry, what line?
Line one oh seven. You have the same copy as we?
Okay, can you read it one more time for me? Sorry.
Okay, it currently reads F, "The sign shall be removed upon the business ceasing operation at this location," shall add the words, comma, poll and supports, after the words sign to the new reading. "The sign, comma, poll and supports shall be removed upon business ceasing operation at this location."
Got it. Okay, council, I have a motion by Councilmember Ringsucker for the additional language on the, on item F on line one oh seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Councilmember Ringsucker's amendment carries six zero in affirmative. Back to you, Councilmember Ringsucker. Any further comments?
Just want to thank former councilman Joe Kokenderfer for his suggestions.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Boyer, did you have a question or a comment?
No, was it?
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments before I do the roll call on resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-two? Okay. Roll call vote. This is for resolution two thousand twenty dash twenty-two concerning a license agreement at two twelve North Washington Street. Councilmember Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ringsucker.
Aye.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Our roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative. License agreement, license agreement resolution for two twelve North Washington Street is approved by council. Okay, we're gonna go to item number twelve on this evening's agenda. Ordinances. We have a handful of ordinances this evening. I believe we have four. And we're gonna keep Councilmember Ringsucker busy. They are all his, all his bailiwick.
Welcome to the Jim Ringsucker Show.
It's the planning, okay. Okay, so item number eight, ordinance ten forty-five concerning city code chapter one fifty-five to establish new standards for the review of site plans. This is going to be a second reading. Councilmember Ringsucker, it's off to you.
Mr. Mayor, council, I make a motion to introduce an ordinance ten, let me restart. I make a motion to introduce ordinance ten forty-five concerning city code chapter one fifty-five to establish new standards for the review of site plans for a second reading and adoption.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsucker, seconded by Councilmember Zinner. This is for a motion introduce ordinance ten forty-five on second reading. Do I have questions or any comments on the introduction of this ordinance for second reading? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion introduce ordinance ten forty-five on second reading carries six zero in the affirmative. Ordinance ten forty-five concerning city code chapter one fifty-five to establish new standards for the review of site plans. This will be an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Havertagh Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland, and sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of repealing and replacing city code chapter one fifty-five to establish new standards for the review of site plans. Council to have a motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Zinner, seconded by Councilmember Ringsucker. Questions or comments? Councilmember Ringsucker.
Mr. Mayor, council, the purpose of this ordinance is to repeal and replace the existing chapter, city code chapter one fifty-five, to properly define the standards for site plans for submission to the city, and I do have an abundance of amendments, total of eight, that I believe would all be friendly amendments. They remove redundancies and correct some spelling, and I'd like to introduce them all as friendly amendments. Everybody should have a copy. Can I make a motion to introduce them if I can start?
Give me one second. Go ahead, Councilmember Ringsucker.
Okay, please follow along. Line one ninety-nine, if I find myself again. There it is. Replace abutting the parcel with directly across a roadway from. So, the line would read, "Of all property owners who are adjacent to or directly across a roadway from the parcel where the site," so that's how the line would read with formatting for the line. The second one, line two oh four. After planning commission, where it reads, "Before the planning commission," period, it would now read, "Before the planning commission at least, comma, at least fourteen days prior to the meeting," period. What that does is adds a timeframe notifying adjacent property owners. Line, line two oh seven. We're gonna delete the words and zoning, so does Department of Planning. Line two twenty-four, where it says ambulance corp, we're going to change that to ambulance corps, C O R P S. Line two eighty-two. Let me see here, where it says, "Site plan, the owner developer must countersign." That's going to be changed to countersign, countersign. Line three nineteen. Replace pedestrians with pedestrian, so it'll now read congestion and for traffic and pedestrian hazards. Then, a couple pages later, line four ninety-four. Replace the word but with by, so it now should read, works for review and approved prior to review of a site plan by the planning commission. And finally, line five thirty-three. Replace water with wastes, with waste. So it will read, "The owner applicant must hire a licensed waste hauler to dispose of solid waste," and that's my motion to introduce those as friendly amendments.
Council have a second?
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsucker, seconded by Councilmember Martin for the previous assigned amendments. Questions or comments? Councilmember Zinner. You might, I don't think your microphone's on. All right, start over from the beginning. Very good place to start.
That's all right.
Anyway, I just wanted to comment that the HPC, the Historic Preservation Commission, has had an opportunity to review this, and they're very pleased with the interjection of the commission, with the potential to work with the planning commission on some of the building facade and massing standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zinner. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Councilmember Ringsucker's amendment? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Opposed amendments by Councilmember Ringsucker approve six zero in the affirmative. We're gonna go back under the question now for the second, or for the roll call vote for the second reading and adoption of ordinance ten forty-five. Any further questions or comments on the ordinance? Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Robertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsucker.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Okay, by roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative. Ordinance ten forty-five concerning city code chapter one fifty-five to establish new standards for the review of site plans is adopted. of site plans is adopted and approved on second reading. Thank you very much, council. Thank you. We're going to go to item B, ordinance concerning amendment of City Code Chapter 173 subdivision requirements. Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council. I make a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning amendment of City Code Chapter 173 subdivision requirements, Section 173-10 Streets and Roads for first reading.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsager. Seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is an ordinance concerning amendment of City Code Chapter 173 subdivision requirements, Section 173-10 Sections of Roads. Questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance on first reading? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce a resolution, or motion to introduce an ordinance on City Chapter Code 173 subdivisions and requirements carries six zero in the affirmative. So council, this is going to be ordinance number 1046, 1046. An ordinance concerning amendment of City Code Chapter 173 subdivision requirements, Section 173-10 Streets and Roads. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Havertagh Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, a local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending City Code Chapter 173 subdivision requirements, Section 173-10 Streets and Roads. Council have a motion to adopt ordinance 1046 on its first reading.
Does it move?
Second.
Council President. Seconded by Councilmember Ringsager. Questions or comments on ordinance 1046? Councilmember Boyer.
Can we get some background on this? Is this a current problem that we see as going to be happening? Or is this just cleaning up our processes again?
Well, if I may comment, what this and the subsequent two ordinances that I'll be introducing later, they're tweaks to existing ordinances that we're putting in place to protect the city. They are necessary because we have some railroad crossings that were closed by CSX. And with this one specifically and the subsequent one, we want to limit the ability of a person to have a private road over CSX crossings and any active or inactive crossings. And the rest, I'll actually defer to the attorney.
Okay, so the genesis of this ordinance and the following two have arisen as a result of what I consider legal gaps in our site plan and subdivision approval process. So what has happened over the course of the past 20 years, there were previously active railroad crossings, at-grade railroad crossings, most of them private. There may have been one or more public ones that I'm not aware of. But in the course of that, site plans and/or subdivisions have been approved either in reliance upon those at-grade crossings being used and not closed, or at least as alternate emergency access. Because the city did not own them as public roads through the dedication process, those crossings were allowed to be closed in what the city considers to be potential concerns in the sense that we had no say over it and we had no prior knowledge really of those closures. So what this ordinance and the others are supposed to try and do is to bring to the city council's attention, and to the city, if there's an existing at-grade crossing that's either pending closure or is closed, either it has to be reopened or in considering the site plan or subdivision plan, in this case subdivision, the city's not considering that as a possible road. In other words, you have to, as you'll see from the others, you have to come to the city with a letter from CSX saying, yes, it's going to be open. We didn't have a way to do that in the past, so this gives the city authority to request that information as part of the approval process.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the roll call votes?
This will be the roll call vote on ordinance 1046 on first reading. Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsager.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative. Ordinance 1046 is adopted on first reading. Council President, when would you like to have a public hearing on 1046?
We'll do that at the next council meeting scheduled December 21st.
Okay. We will have a public hearing on ordinance 1046 on December 21st, which is the next council meeting scheduled.
7:00 PM.
And we will have it at 7:00 PM preceding the council meeting. So most likely, we'll have a same situation where we'll have to ask citizens to submit comments either by email, letter, smoke signal, or by phone call, one way or the other. Get your comments in here. What's that?
Telegraph's still accepted?
Yes, telegraph and carrier pigeons still work. So we will be receiving comments up to 7:00 PM that night of the council meeting if you wish to comment on ordinance 1046. Probably easiest way is email. Okay, thank you very much, council. We're going to go to item number C, ordinance concerning amendment of the City Code Chapter 198 Water and Sewers, Section 198-18 Obstructions. First reading, Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council. I make a motion to introduce an ordinance concerning amendment of City Code Chapter 198 Water and Sewers, Section 198-18 Obstructions for first reading.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsager. Seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is an introduction of an ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction?
No, we're not introduced. Go ahead.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance regarding City Code Chapter 198 Water and Sewers, Section 198-18 Obstructions, carries six zero in the affirmative. Council, this is going to be numbered, ordinance 1047, 1047. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Havertagh Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, a local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending City Code Chapter 198 Water and Sewers Sections 198-18 Obstructions. Council have a motion to adopt 1047 on first reading.
Does it move?
I have a motion by Councilmember Martin. Seconded by Councilmember Ringsager. Questions or comments on the ordinance? Councilmember Boyer.
So my question is, are there any current requests and any permits in asking for this ability now to create a parking pad or a driveway, I'm assuming driveway as well?
I'm not aware of any, and I think this issue came up because we've been finding around the city through the period of past four years while I've been here, some of our drainage and utility easements are kind of encroached on. And so this gives, again, the city the authority to have people come to City Hall first before they're encroaching on anything. Chances are, if it's not interfering with the city's ability to access the easements and the right-of-way, that they will probably be approved, but at least the city gets prior notice of that.
Don't they already have to go through a permitting process to do this?
We do, but believe it or not, in the history of the town, there are people who do things encroaching on city right-of-ways and easements without getting prior approval. So this just relates specifically to private roads or parking pads, which are little more structurally permanent type things as opposed to just putting a little fence up.
So in addition to the permitting process, you also have to come before city council?
Correct. So this just adds...
More to a lease.
No, this just adds, yeah, for resolution by the city. This one is asking for that particular private road or parking pad that goes over a city drainage or utility easement to come to city council and on top of the Planning Department and/or Department of Public Works. In part, in the past, approvals were done that have allowed people to put driveways, for example, into city parks, among other things, that have created a problem. So this would, because you're going over right-of-way or an easement, it would require it to come to city council first. So again, this is another way for the city to have a little more active role in the approval process where there had been gaps in the prior approval process through the city departments.
And the approval would be for perpetuity? Or would it be like all the other things that we have?
Not necessarily. It depends on what is. If it's an easement, that's a little different because the city doesn't own it, it's just an easement, but we still require access. If it's a city ownership issue, the only way it could be in perpetuity basically is if we sold the property outright, and that would require other processes under our charter.
So if they were to lease?
They could lease it for up to 50 years, or it could be if it's a, like a tent-type structure that would be more of a license, so that would be different things. But this is just another way to kind of come out the same problem we've seen. It dovetails a little bit with the lease and licensing tightening up of that process as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shain. Any further questions? Councilmember Ringsager.
I have no more comment. It was already answered by the attorney.
Okay, any further questions on ordinance 1047 before roll call vote? Okay. Roll call vote. Ordinance 1047. Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsager.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin. By a roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative. City Council Resolution 1047 regarding City Code Chapter 198 Water and Sewer Obstructions is adopted on first reading, six zero. Council President, would you like to have the public hearing on December 21st at the next council meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Public hearing on ordinance 1047 will be held on December 21st at the next city council meeting, prior to the council meeting starting at 7:00 PM. Again, as stated earlier, if you have any comments you wish to make, you can either call City Hall or email City Hall and submit your comments. We will be receiving comments until 7:00 PM that evening. All comments will be read into the record. We're going to go to item D, ordinance concerning amendment of city zoning code, Article 1, Section 205-8, street frontage required. First reading, and this is going to be Councilmember Ringsager.
Mr. Mayor, council. I make a motion to introduce ordinance concerning amendment of the city zoning code, Article 1, Section 205-8, entitled "Street Frontage Required," for first reading.
Second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Councilmember Ringsager. Seconded by Councilmember Martin for the introduction of an ordinance. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance concerning zoning code, Article 1, Section 205-8, street frontage required, carries six zero in affirmative. Council, this is going to be ordinance 1048, ordinance 1048. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of City of Havertagh Grace adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government and land use articles of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Sections 33 and 34 of the Havertagh Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending city zoning code, Articles 1, Section 205-8, street frontage required. Council to have a motion to adopt 1048.
Does it move?
Second.
Council President. Made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Ringsager. Questions or comments on ordinance 1048?
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance introduces amendments to our current zoning code specifically pertaining to road frontages along railroad crossings. And I'd like to, again, defer to the attorney for a better, more in-depth explanation.
Thank you. Again, this actually is in response to an issue we actually had where after a subdivision plan was approved, there was a closure of a railroad crossing which affected the ability, or I shouldn't say the ability, affected the premier emergency services that we like to offer our citizens. So even though we're working on other avenues of dealing with the situation, the whole matter could have been avoided had we had some type of legislation in place like this where if there was a subsequent closure, the council would have had, the city itself would have some remedy. So that's the genesis of this. I don't know of any current at-grade crossings open that would be subject to this, but because we are in the process of annexing some properties along Route 40, there could be some of those still in existence. And the idea is that if there's going to be site plan or subdivision approval for any of these sites, and the Planning Commission or the Board of Appeals or the city departments see that there's an at-grade crossing, that they approve it based on the existence of that at-grade crossing, and then subsequently unbeknownst to the city, that crossing is closed, and we're left hole in the bag because we have no way to control that. This gives the city the ability to make alterations to the plans if an at-grade crossing is subsequently closed through no fault of the city, obviously, but through private parties and/or CSX or whatever railroad isn't charged. So again, some of these matters are outside the city's hands in terms of the termination of the closures, but it should not affect the city's, I'm sorry, the city's ability to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. And this is an attempt to continue with that idea that the city does have a say in protecting the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. This is one way to help accomplish that.
Is there any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Other amendments from council before I do the roll call vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer. Yes.
Ringsager.
Yes.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in affirmative.
By a roll call vote of six zero in affirmative, City Council ordinance 1048 is adopted on first reading. Council President, would you like to have the public hearing at the next council meeting as well?
Mr. Mayor, you read my mind.
Okay, fantastic. Public hearing will be on December 21st at the next council meeting preceding the council meeting at 7:00 PM. And again, if you have a comment you wish to submit on ordinance 1048, you can call City Hall or submit an email to the city, as long as it's received by 7:00 o'clock at the time of the beginning of the meeting, and all comments will be read into the record. Okay, I think that's it for ordinances. Anything else, Jim?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure if I dig, I can find four or five more, but...
All right.
We'll wait till the next meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringsager. All right, so item number 13 is going to be old business this evening. There is no old business. Item 14 is new business. We do have a new business. We have a proposed budget amendment 2021-04, and I will hand this off to the Chair of the Budget Finance Committee, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce budget amendment 2021-04.
Hey, council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is for the proposed budget amendment 2021-04. Questions or comments? Council President?
I just want to make note that in the intercity memorandum that came out, it talks about the city awarded a $28,400 contract for the replacement of playground equipment at McWhitty Park. I think that should read Tidings Park. I think that should read Tidings Park.
That's correct. Council President, it should be, it should say Tidings Park on here. Thank you for catching that. Any further comments, Council President?
None.
Thank you very much for that. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
I just want to have a little bit of clarification for everyone on how we got to today. This project was budgeted for last fiscal year. It was not completed, and it should have been rolled over and included in the first budget amendment for the year, but was not because of an oversight. And I just would like somebody to come forward and give a little bit of an explanation of why we're doing this now.
I can't explain exactly why it wasn't put in the First Amendment, but I can explain why it's in the Fourth Amendment. At the time that this was discovered, that the purchase order was prematurely closed and not encumbered, that's when we decided to put forth a budget amendment and have it stand in and of itself for clarity and not roll it in with a group of other line items. The project had started, the contract was awarded back in, the purchase order was awarded back in April of 2020. We received a portion of the components. We did not receive the balance of them until we got into the next budget year. Inadvertently, over several, I mean, I would say more than 100 purchase orders are closed in the course of transferring from the end of one fiscal year into a new fiscal year. Those projects that carry on from one year to the next, those funds are typically encumbered. This one was not. It was a mistake. So what we do is we resurrect the purchase order through a budget amendment to the council. This was, now, when this budget was, when this purchase order was closed at the end of fiscal year 2020, that money was not already allocated in the 2021 budget, as explained by Mr. DeHordy's memorandum, we actually had a surplus. So the money was earmarked to be spent in 2020, but wasn't, and inadvertently carried forward in a general fund. The funds are there, so we're not, like, duplicating or double paying for anything. I could attribute to some of this, perhaps confusion was during, it was a time when COVID was, we were taking very strict measures here, a lot of folks teleworking, there wasn't the joint, the face-to-face meetings that we typically have when we're going through purchase orders and making determinations of what gets closed and what gets reopened.
Thank you, Mr. Saipole. Yes?
Moving forward, what's the plan so that we don't have the same situation next year?
Well, the administration puts forth policies and procedures all the time, always trying to enhance and make our process more efficient. In this particular case, what we're doing is any purchase order that involves contractual service or capital equipment, if a purchase order is recommended to be closed, the director from, the department head or that director, will sign off as saying it is clear to be closed. And then the Director of Finance or his designee will close the purchase order.
Okay. And so this brings up the issue of McIlhany Park. Just saying it again, that this structure is not to go at McIlhany. It is already at Tidings, and there is a plan in the future to do improvements at McIlhany?
The administration has a vision for the north park, or the north part of town, which includes McIlhany Park, North Park Trail, and other things along that way. That vision is still being formulated. There was no specific equipment chosen or decided upon or spoken for to go in McIlhany Park at this time.
But there will be a plan coming to us at some point?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Saipole. Any other questions or comments on the budget amendment? Councilmember Robertson?
Not to get too far off topic, but since we're on the conversation of the north part of town and the park and all, we're going to see a similar presentation, perhaps, at a council meeting like we saw for the upgrades at Tidings Park?
Yes, since you brought it up, I've made mention a few times, and council is well aware, that the city is going to be receiving a lot of land from the Exelon Power Company in the very near future. A lot of people think we own all that land where the Joe K. Trow is, but we actually don't. It's being lent to us, but we're going to take possession of it soon. Myself, Chief Staff Gammatoria, Mr. Saipole, Mr. Whitty, we've walked that land several times recently, try and get an idea of the scope of how much land we're going to get and what possible uses are. First thing I want to do, as much as sometimes I hate getting an engineer firm to do something, I mean, I want to actually have a real design on, like, the topography of the land and what's possible to put there. And I think it'd be a good idea to see what's actually will be ours in the future and what still isn't ours. Once we have, like, a concept plan, there's that word again, concept plan, but once we have a concept plan, what we can do there, then we'll start the dialogue about what we want to see it look like. So, you know, it's a lot of land coming our way, and I really think that the northern part of Havity Grace, the Lockhouse grounds, place where McIlhany Park is now, where it transitions into the North Park Trail, there's so much potential there for outdoor recreational activity. So again, so once we, once we see what we're going to get, and once we see out the layout, the topography, absolutely, 100%, you know, everybody's going to be brought on board because whatever we do there, it's not going to be done in one year. It's going to be, it's going to be a multi-year process to develop it, whether we, you know, enhanced a playground, whether we add a pickleball court, or whether we have a disc golf, or whether we just make it more parks where we put benches or grills, I mean, whatever happens there, more walking trails, it's going to take a lot of thought and consideration and funding as well. So, answer your question, we're just in the beginning phases of trying to figure out the next step of getting a company to help us design or give us to lay the land. So it should be, Mrs. Shag, do you have any idea, I don't know when the last time you talked to Exelon, about the progress of this land transfer?
No, I actually, I actually have not been directly involved in that. I haven't seen any documents cross my desk yet, so I'm not exactly sure where we stand on that.
Okay.
I'll have to touch base with Chief of Staff and...
Okay, I'll call the Chief of Staff up. Chief of Staff? Thank you, Ms. Sishak. I know I've been talking to Chief of Staff about it. What's the update on the property transfer from Exelon?
Thank you, Mayor. The last conversation I had with the Exelon's attorney, they were going to give us a call right after the first of the year. They had a number of items they had to close out, one of which was the demolition of a dwelling that was up on Canestio Street, which that's been taken care of. The dam transfer, or the dam renewal of their permit, took place, I think, in the second quarter of this calendar year, so all that has to get documented and all the Ts crossed and Is dotted before they can move forward with the property transfer. The one other thing that's sort of the holdup at this point is getting it appraised. They have to appraise it, although they're going to donate it to the city, it's, there's some tax value to it as well. So we could be looking at probably first quarter of next year with some idea of when we would be seeing it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for the update, Chief of Staff.
And just one other, if I may mention, when we walked the property, you'd asked the Director of Administration and I and Mr. Whitty, we got with Mr. Grimm, and we also got a topo map completed of the property up there, and it's, we just hung it on the wall this afternoon.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate the update, Chief of Staff. Councilmember Robertson, does that help answer your question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. It's going to be a good thing for the city. It's going to be a good thing for all of us, I mean, to get our hands around it when it actually happens and work on the next big step for the city.
Mr. Mayor, do you know, historically, there was a plan to put an amusement park on a boardwalk there?
Really?
Some 60, 70 years ago. I actually saw it, yeah. I mean, there was, much like Atlantic City, there, Jim Miller...
He knows everything.
He knows everything about Havity Grace. He has, and Buhukas, I think, posted it one day, about the plan, years ago, they had pamphlets and everything to put a big amusement park and boardwalk all up along the river there.
I'll be darned.
It's not the plan now.
I'll be darned. Well, everything's on table.
Dust it off.
Like I say, one...
Talk to Great Wolf Lodge.
Yeah, talk to Great Wolf Lodge. Like I say, once we get the land and figure out what we have and, you know, we can start putting our heads together on that. That's good. Any other further questions on the budget amendment before we vote on it? For the budget amendment, I will do a roll call. Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ringzacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Council President Glenn?
Yes.
By a roll call vote of six, zero, and affirmative, proposed budget amendment 2021-04 is approved, and now it's no longer proposed, it's budget amendment 2021-04. Councilmember Robertson, do you have the transfer numbers for account numbers in front of you?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. And the from column, account number 01-0001-49-98, unrestricted fund balance, $28,400. In the to column, account number 01-1091-6507, citywide enhancement projects, $28,400.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Thanks for reading the numbers into the record. Thank you, Council. We're moving into item 15, reports from my directors, and we're going to start off with Mr. Saipole, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, citizens. Just two minor items, and then maybe a little housekeeping. On Saturday, December 12th, the Susquehanna Lockhouse Museum presents the 48th Annual Candlelight Tour of Historic Havity Grace. This year, the tour has a little bit of a twist in that it's a musical outdoor tour. This event will run from 4:00 PM until 8:00. The Lockhouse Museum, during its time, has also transformed into a holiday boutique, featuring handcrafted and home-baked goods. It will be open both Saturday and Sunday, Saturday from 9:00 to 5:00, and Sunday from 11:00 to 3:00. Also, I wanted to make mention that the city is hosting a citywide house decorating contest, with judging occurring December 14th and 15th. Griswold or traditional, whichever you prefer, show us your holiday style. Decorate your house, and then email your address, phone number, and name to hgdtourism@havitygraceMD.com to enter the contest. Houses must be within the city limits. Prizes will be awarded, and the winner's announced at an upcoming city council meeting. And then, as the City Hall is closed to the general public on a day-to-day basis, we still receive calls, and I'm encouraging people to please use electronic transfers or the drop boxes for conducting your city business. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Saipole, for the update, and thanks for telling everybody about the city holiday light decorating contest. What's that?
Okay.
Yeah, no, good, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call forward Mr. Shane Grimm, Director of the Planning Department. Good to see you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Good evening, council members. This evening, I just wanted to be brief about my interactions with the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals recently. I must admit that I was really nervous about going to virtual meetings, and I have a tendency to overthink things sometimes, but what I really wanted to point out is that the commission members and the board members did a fantastic job of handling those first virtual meetings. And I really wanted to give kind of a shout-out to Chairman Volney Ford of the Planning Commission and Mr. Charlie Packard. They were very well-prepared, obviously took the time to think about how it would, how it all would transpire, and particularly Volney as well, had a meticulous procedure for handling the meeting, and I couldn't be any prouder of the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals for the way they handled that transition to virtual. Planning Commission and Board of Appeals is a little different than, say, a Historic Preservation Commission because you're getting testimony from the applicant and from the department and citizens as well. Luckily, so far, we haven't had any citizens in these cases, but they did an excellent job, and I couldn't be any prouder. And as I've probably said before, the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals are one of the favorite things about my job. I really enjoy working with them, and so, again, fantastic job on their part. Everybody pitched in, and were patient, and we did an excellent job. So with that being said, I wanted to let you know that on Monday evening, December 14th, we'll be having another virtual Planning Commission meeting, and that meeting will be to hear the cases for two Bully Rock parcels. One is parcel F, which was scheduled twice previously, but was postponed each time, and then also for parcel N. Parcel F is for 102 single-family dwellings, which is adjacent to, is on the golf course side and is adjacent to Fields of Rockland. And then parcel N is off of Bully Rock Parkway, and there was a previous plan approved there for 144 condominium units. The new developer has changed the plan somewhat, and they're proposing 188 units in seven buildings, luxury condominiums. And so that case will be Monday night, and anybody that wants to participate, they have a couple of different ways. They can either just watch on YouTube if they don't want to give any comments or anything like that, but if they do want to participate in the Zoom meeting, they just need to contact me by 5:00 PM with their email and their name, and we'll put them in a virtual waiting room. Otherwise, if they do not wish to participate in the Zoom meeting, but they do have comments, then I encourage them to reach out to me as soon as possible, but no later than, say, 5:00 PM, so that they can send me their comments, and I will forward them to the Planning Commission, and I'll also read them into the record. So that's how we're set up for the Planning Commission and Board of Appeals. And lastly, I just wanted to let you know that we're continuing to work in the Department of Planning on updates to the zoning code, and I appreciate you all approving the site plan ordinance. That goes a long way to updating that section of the code and gives us a little bit more teeth to ensure that we have really good projects that come into the city. And also, as Councilman Ringzacher, I believe, said, it really defines and streamlines our process, a process that I'm familiar with, and hopefully a process that a lot of people that have been doing work in the county are familiar with. So we'll keep at it, and we'll keep Councilman Ringzacher busy, and we'll have some more stuff in the new year before you all. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grimm, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, Mr. Grimm? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to call forward, or Ms. Quizamary Sturgis, our Economic Development Director, is out this evening, but we will go to Mr. George DeHordy, Director of Finance. Good evening, Mr. DeHordy, and thank you for being here. How much money we have left?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. First again, thank you all for your approval of the budget amendment allowing us to honor our commitments that we made at the end of last year. General fund, we are currently sitting at a fund balance of just about $7.6 million, which is just under $1.5 million ahead of where we thought we'd be at this time with the budget. The biggest source of that is the beginning fund balance that we transferred, and it's just under $1.3 million, and most of that is due to tightening of spending due to COVID, and just trying to be very, very cautious. Salaries and benefits are running over $550,000 below budget. Most of this has to do with healthcare claims. We have received the discount that we negotiated with the renewal, and I'm happy to say that really helped. We've also been very deliberate in replacing vacancies, especially with all the teleworking and that kind of thing going on. So that's going well. On kind of an update, last time I reported, income tax receipts were running about $700,000 behind schedule. We did receive our first payment from the state, and it was about $600,000, but we're still running 100,000 to 200,000 behind where we thought we'd be. But given the projections of the state, I think we're doing very well, and we still don't know how much of that is due to reduced incomes versus just delays in people reporting. Since we've only received the first payment, it's a little hard to get any information out of them, but we'll keep our, we'll continue... Since we've only received the first payment, uh, it's a little hard to get any information out of them, but we'll keep our, we continue to keep our eyes on it. Real property continues to run about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ahead of budget expectations. And, uh, as I've reported several times, our highway user fees are still, um, estimated to be down from budget about sixty thousand dollars and those are based on S H A estimates that they provide to us based on their receipts. Fund nine is sitting at a little over one point three million dollars, which is a little over a million dollar increase year-to-date. The operating profit has been one point four million dollars. There's been just under a million dollars in capital fees connected, uh, capital fees collected with new development. And we have spent between debt service and capital projects about one point four million dollars, leaving us with the one point three balance. The Marina Fund is sitting at eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, an increase for the year of about thirty-five thousand dollars. It's a little behind. Last year, we were up about fifty thousand dollars this time, about fifteen thousand dollar difference, who right now, we believe is mostly due to delays in receiving next year's, uh, slip fees. But they, that, they are always going to be at risk until we collect the money. But we, we, we have a normal process where we go out and any of the slips not filled, we go out and, uh, rent them. Though I don't expect in, in the fifteen thousand, uh, is a little higher, but it's not anything that's causing us any undue concern at this time. And that's the condition of the funds as we, as we stand today. Any questions?
Council, any questions for Mr. DeHordy? Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Happy to do it.
Okay, I'm gonna call forward Mr. Tim Whitty to Director of Public Works. Hey, good evening, Mr. Whitty. Thanks for being here.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, just a couple of updates here. Aberdeen Waterline Project, uh, we've made a submittal to State Highway, addressed all their comments and submitted to State Highway Administration. Uh, we did have a meeting with them, let them know what we were doing and we kind of got everything moving. We did, uh, we had, did receive approval from Seoul Conservation District on the plan, as well as M. Meyerland Department of the Environment approved our grading permit. And I do have to give a shout out to Hartford County Department of Public Works. Patrick and I met with them last week. There was an issue, really, we had, uh, the initial design called for the Aberdeen's pump, uh, booster pump station to be, you know, where they're, uh, in the round general area where they're, uh, if you're on Route Forty, Robin Hood Road, their sewer pump station. It was supposed to be in that general area. And so we were just gonna stub into this new area and they were gonna put the meter vault and, um, and we would just end, end our project there. Unfortunately, whatever went, uh, wasn't familiar, they ended up moving their booster pump station all the way down to Beards Hill Road. And so we had an issue with where we were gonna locate our meter vault, uh, for the project. Hartford County actually allowed us to, to take over a, uh, Hartford Systems, they have a meter and sixteen-inch water line that goes into Rockland and they have permitted us to disconnect them from their water line and connect that vault into our system, uh, new system, which saved us probably thirty, forty thousand dollars. So I do have to thank them for that and allow us to get this project done in a, in a, in a rap, in a quicker way and have some cost savings in construction. I'm trying to look at a pre-bid date, uh, for, for, uh, request for proposal date on this project, the end of January. And I'm being aggressive, but I'm gonna try to get a start date and sometime around April start date for this water line. But we're, we're trying to get done and move forward on that project. Uh, in that, I do wanna try to get it down there. I need to get down here because of the Blenheim, Blenheim project that's, uh, that we recently annexed for the apartments down, along for that Blenheim Farm Road, uh, farm project or location. The Capital Projects Green in Wilson Street, I reviewed those plans, they're moving in towards ninety percent engineering. Uh, the, um, sewer project Commerce Street is moving into ninety percent, uh, engineering. Fortunately, we had some, we've had some real issues with Francis Street. Trying to get the camera, the C T, TV camera of that sewer line, they keep running into root balls. Part of the pipes collapsed and so we've had some issues. We finally got that finished this Friday and, and they're gonna move towards the engineering. That one's fallen behind a little bit, unfortunately. Old Bay Lane, uh, that water line project approved fifty percent drawings, we're moving into ninety percent drawings now. And I will be receiving, uh, fifty percent drawings for the National Guard, uh, project by the end of December. Paving, as you knew, we're moving on paving with the Baltimore Gas Electric Company, they've been moving through. So they completed Warren, they're moving their Stokes and Franklin Street, they're working on. One of the things we actually had them do too is we had them replace a lot of curb out there, they deteriorated. So some of the costs are gonna be a little bit more higher than we anticipated, but it's just, you, you can't pave a road and just have, you know, deteriorated curb. It just, it just doesn't work.
Sure.
Like it's kind of a, so we, we're gonna incur a little bit of extra cost on that. Gerard Street, actually, the engineer's completed on that and I've sent that out to, uh, Pullet Signs. Their, actually, the biggest impact on that project is gonna be with them. Uh, the storm drains, most of the storm drain system comes, well, it's pretty much most of the storm drain systems on, on their property. And so I wanted to get buy-in with them first before I go to the other, uh, to the other property owners. But, uh, in initial conversation with them, she seemed to be agreeable to it. Uh, but we are gonna try to schedule, uh, on the next week, just kind of go over the plan and knock, and nail that down. And then I'll move forward with the, um, with the other property owners. In the meantime, I'm also moving, Stephanie's working on getting the CBD money, I don't know if I ever say that right, but, uh, money for that. To the tune of about, it's about thirty-four thousand dollars worth of work. So we're gonna get those funds from the county for that project. Uh, Gash's Creek approved the materials list and they're gonna start construction in the next couple of weeks. Lewis Lane, uh, the storm drain, I wanted to get that finished before the school gets finished and the state puts their new crossing system in. That actually went out for request for proposal. And we're getting bids probably in the next couple of weeks. Uh, finished design, the design was done in-house on that, so we saved some money on that. And the Marine is going through the final permits. We're going into permitting grading and, and, I mean, design and, and permitting process on that project as well. I've got the specs to review, but that's moving along pretty well. So that's pretty much what I've touched on today. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitty. Councilmembers, enter.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about Gash's Creek. Is that gonna, is traffic going up Chapel Road through Gash's Creek gonna be, uh, that bridge gonna be impeded?
It's gonna be, it will be impeded. There will be a lane closure on that. It is directional drill projects, which should be relatively, uh, not of, not as much of a construction effort, but it's still, they're probably still gonna have the narrowness of that road in that area. They're gonna close down one lane. Traffic will be able to go through, but it'll probably be restricted to one lane.
Okay, so it won't be like a few years back when the whole road was closed down?
No, we're not gonna be doing that. It, the construction's off, off the road and the shoulder, but with equipment and things of that nature, they're gonna probably close down one lane.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Should be quick work, couple of weeks, it should be out.
And our questions, Mr. Whitty? Okay, sir. Thank you so much for the update. Thank you. I'd call forward Captain John Crass of the Havity Grace Police Department, filling in for Chief Walter this evening. Good evening, Captain.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. How are you?
We're doing well. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, just a few quick things to cover tonight. Uh, first of all, our lobby. So, uh, we have limited the access to our lobby again, and this was due to a, um, the COVID, you know, precautions. And so, uh, we are not closed. So, uh, there were some comments made on social media, just wanna clear that up. Uh, we just have limited the access to better protect our, uh, employees, especially our dispatchers. So, uh, the vestibule has video and audio. And so as soon as you enter the vestibule, they'll see you and they'll, uh, interact with you and then figure out what, what you need. And then we have an officer either respond to the front of the building or come out, you know. So, uh, just wanted to clear that up. And, uh, second point, we had No Shave November. So there's about twelve of us that participated in that. And so I'm very happy to say that we raised nearly thirteen hundred dollars. So that was, uh, donated to the American Cancer Association. And, uh, so we had some fun with that. And, uh, some of us were a little more gray than others. Felt good to, to get, uh, December here, so, um, and just in closing, crime prevention. So, um, just wanted to remind everybody this time of year. Although the, the shopping seems to be a little bit less in the malls and the big box stores, but I think there's still people out there doing that. Um, just as a reminder, if you have packages, don't leave them in sight, especially like electronics and things. It's sort of a target. And, uh, regardless of the time of year, uh, ladies, don't leave your purses and your vehicles in sight or, uh, anytime like work-related electronics, laptops, things like that. It tends to, uh, you know, again, draw, draw some attention to your vehicle. They'll break your window. So, uh, again, this time of year, uh, we all are probably wearing out the Amazon people. So, uh, if you're having deliveries made, um, and you can't be there for the delivery, just as a reminder, you might wanna consider working with your neighbors, see if that, somebody would pick it up for you once the delivery was made. Or, um, all the major carriers, they all have, uh, UPS, FedEx, they all have designated secure package pickup locations. So you can deviate your, uh, if you can't be home for the delivery, you can set up arrangements to have it delivered to a secured location. And then you could swing by at your convenience after work or whatever and pick it up. And that way you know that, uh, you know, no, no porch pirate issues. So, uh, anyway. Uh, that's, that's all I had for this evening.
Thank you, Captain. Does any Councilmember have a question for Captain Crass? Thanks for filling in tonight. It's good to see you, John. Thank you.
See you too. Take care.
Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, item sixteen, business from the mayor. Just a couple, couple announcements. Um, hey, uh, we had the dumpster day, first one we had in about a year. We had our, our community dumpster day back on November twenty-first. And, uh, about a hundred people showed up. The good news is, I guess that means there's a lot of trash thrown away in Havity Grace and there's, you know, not much left. So we'll continue to have dumpster days. I mean, um, whether, I mean, normally we're like hundreds and hundreds of people, but a hundred people showed up is pretty decent. So we will continue to have them again in the future. Uh, just one of the services we like to provide our citizens. Hopefully we'll go back to a bi-annual basis where we have in spring and fall. But like we always said, if you want your city to be clean, you have to give people opportunities to, to get rid of, you know, bulky, unsightly stuff that the trash won't take usually. So I wanna thank my DPW, uh, Department for working on Saturday, as well as my Chief of Staff, who diligently checked everybody's driver's license to make sure that they are indeed Havity Grace citizens. So that's important. Also, the Holly Jolly First Friday, uh, actually became the Holly Jolly First Saturday. The rain, uh, was a little too much on Friday and Santa Claus told me he doesn't like it so wet. He likes a little bit colder and windier. So we appeased Santa Claus and we had the event on Saturday instead. And, uh, to those who were there, we wanna thank the crowd for, for being there. Everyone I saw was, wore a mask. There might have been one or two people standing by themselves, uh, that took it off for a minute or two, but I mean, in general, I didn't really see anybody not wearing a mask. People did the best they could to social distance. Uh, so, and those who watched it at home, we appreciate it. It was also livestreamed at the same time through a production through the Opera House or, or the cultural, um, my mind just, what's that?
Cultural arts?
Anyway, whatever, Opera House. My mind just drew a blank. Sorry about that. Too many committees. So, uh, yeah, so Holly Jolly went well. Santa Claus showed up, uh, for the kids and everybody, all the kids had a chance to hand Santa Claus a, uh, a list. So we went well. So thanks, everybody who participated. The tree got lit and as I said earlier, the tree, uh, it's a new tree for our city. It's an artificial tree that we, uh, kind of, uh, custom designed. I mean, we, we picked the height and we picked the kind of bulbs, uh. Uh, we went with the old-style C-seven bulbs that are color. Uh, but they are L E Ds, so they're energy efficient. And I kind of made a announce, I made an announcement at the tree lighting the other night that, um, the tree actually can, can absorb more, uh, more rings to it and make it taller. So I told a lot of kids in the crowd, you know, the, the nicer Havity Grace is all year, the taller the tree grows. So the more positivity and kindness and love we show for one another, the tree keep, keeps growing every year. So that's the tree meter. So it might grow two feet, four feet. Now, you never know next year. So, uh, but the tree is a beautiful tree. So thank you very much, uh, for the Council, for all your support, uh, with all the events we do this year and, uh, helping us light the, the town up. Uh, Jason, are you gonna say something about Reefs Across America? I mean, are you sure? Cause I was gonna defer to you. Okay, all right. Not a problem. Um, so I do wanna say, uh, Saturday, December nineteenth, uh, once again, uh, Joseph L. Davis, uh, Post Number Forty-seven, also known as the American Legion, um, will be, um, doing their annual Reef Across America. It's gonna be Saturday, December nineteenth at two P M. It's gonna be taking place at Angel Hole Cemetery. Uh, we would love it for anybody to show up, uh, to support it and in attendance as in years past. Um, if you have any questions, uh, please contact Post Number Forty-seven, Ms. Alma Arive. Did I say her last name right? Okay, thank you. Or Councilmember Robertson. Can help you too. So, uh, we're looking forward to it. This is another one of those things where, um, you know, I know we're in the middle of a global pandemic now, but if everybody wears their mask and, and be smart about it, this is something that's very important that we do, okay? I wanna thank the Legion for their efforts, uh, to get this done. You know, I got the COVID numbers here. Uh, I, I don't need to read all the COVID numbers to everybody. Uh, I'm sure we're all well aware of them now. They're, they just keep getting bigger and bigger every day. But I will say there's a milestone today. Uh, I, I've noticed the city Havity Grace has now hit number four oh nine. Four hundred and nine citizens of our city in two one zero seven eight zip code have, um, have contracted the, uh, the virus since it started. I only say it's a milestone for me because I, I'm pretty sure by watching the numbers, back in August, when I contracted COVID nineteen, I was number one oh nine. So now we're at four oh nine. So three hundred, uh, new cases in just a little over three months. So it's, um, you know, when you consider things, you know, put a positive spin to it. I mean, we are a city of fourteen thousand plus people on top of each other. I mean, cities are tight population. Uh, we aren't that bad. Um, there are other areas of Hartford County that are a lot higher in COVID numbers. So I guess, you know, I'm not admonishing anybody. I mean, we're gonna get the COVID virus one way or the other in the city. It's, no one knows when you get it and it just happens to people. But, um, you know, I'd, I'd rather put a positive spin to it and say, you know what? Four hundred and nine, uh, since March isn't bad for a city of fourteen thousand plus people. Um, so I just wanna say, um, you know, keep practicing, you know, the important, uh, hand washing, social distancing, wear your mask. And remember, it's not just for you. It's for your friends, your family, people you care about, and your neighbors. So like I said, uh, there's a positive spin to things. Instead of saying four oh nine's a lot, maybe four oh nine's not as bad as other places. So. Finally, I guess, I'll cut my comments short. I'll save some things for next meeting. But today is, uh, the seventy-ninth anniversary of Pearl Harbor. And I was teaching my kids today about it. My thirteen, fourteen-year-old students, uh, to them Pearl Harbor is a movie that came out a few years ago. Uh, I told them, I told them it was actually a real thing. And they were kind of, uh, intrigued by it. I guess any, uh, military survivors of Pearl Harbor are probably, at least if you're eighteen years old, at least you're ninety-seven years old now, probably. Or older. I remember when I first started teaching twenty years ago, I tried to impress upon my students back then how important what we call the Greatest Generation was uh, to World War Two. And I used to challenge my students to bring in a Baltimore son obituary any day, any day of the week. Bring in a Baltimore son obituary. And I used to tell my students, of course, this is twenty years ago, find me any man age seventy-three or older, and I guarantee you're gonna see that they served in World War Two. And the kids were always amazed by it. Whoever the man was, it said, served in the Navy, served in the Wrinkle, World War Two. And it kind of like dawned on these kids, like, you know, it was a pretty big deal. Um, but nowadays, it's a lot more, uh, words in history books and documentaries as the Greatest Generation is slowly fading off into the, into the history books. But the reason I bring up Pearl Harbor, I found a very, a very, a lot of similarities between Pearl Harbor and COVID. Now let me explain myself. I was, I was talking to my students today about this. You know, You know, Pearl Harbor, you know, everybody knows World War II started, you know, in September of thirty-nine when, when Germany invaded Poland and the, the world got caught up into it, but the United States stayed out of it for a little over two years. You know, we had the Atlantic Ocean to our east and the Pacific Ocean to our west. And I guess the president's best policy at the time was to keep the United States out of it the best he could, even though the war, the world was blowing up and, and turmoil. Well, December seventh, nineteen forty-one, taught Americans a lesson that things that go on in the world can affect us here in America. And when history books, you know, play armchair quarterback, one thing they all say, the same thing, is the world was glad when the United States got involved in World War II because we ended it four years later. Nobody had the resources or the material or the, just the sheer determination to finish it like the United States of America did. So here we are seventy-nine years later. We, we live good lives in this country. You know, we, we have a great quality of life as Americans. And, you know, last December, we were watching footage from Wuhan, China, of people walking the streets in China wearing face masks. Things like that have never happened here before. And I'm sure many of us dismissed it. I, I dismissed it. I, I just thought that stuff that happened somewhere else. But we learned, once again, things that happen globally can impact us here in the United States of America. And as we are on the eve of approving a handful of vaccines made by American companies, I'm sure once again, the world, I wouldn't say glad, but the world is, you know, happy that the United States is involved in this fight for humanity, for against this virus. Because once again, the people of this country, the ingenuity and the, this, the financial power of this government has, you know, raced against time to get a vaccine out within a year. A lot of countries don't have those resources like we have. And so, you know, then my comparison is, again, global, global events that impact us here in the country, that we don't think would, but eventually do. And when the United States of America gets involved, we, we, we finish it. We solve it. Which I said, which I just believe is amazingly talks about the kind of people we are. When, when a free society is faced with a problem, they're gonna come up with a solution. So, you know, I have no doubt that Americans will, will, will move forward, that this vaccine will be a worldwide vaccine. And I know other countries are working on vaccines as well. But I'm hoping that this time next year, when we are faced again with the holiday season, that we can think back and talk about how we all worked together to get through these times. Hopefully we will not be wearing masks a year from now. I really, really hope so. So with that said, you know, just want to thank everybody in Havertagh Grace for doing the best you can, for being the best you can, and protecting your neighbors and wearing your mask. And, you know, like I said, it hits close to home. And I know we actually had a, a passing in our, of one of our own citizens last week, Mr. Tim West. And I'm gonna let council president say some words on that, who, who knew him pretty well. So like I said, we all know it's hitting close to home now, when we start losing our own community members. Thank you very much. We'll move on to council's comments. And, sorry, hold on. We'll start with Councilmember Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council citizens. First, I want to thank the mayor and the administration for going forward as much as possible to keep the normalcy of this holiday season. The people appreciate it. I know I appreciate everything you did with the tree lighting to bring us a little bit of normal holiday spirit. So thank you and the administration for that. Secondly, the holiday season is here. The Havertagh Grace Ambulance Corps is looking for donations for toys to tots, or toys for tots. So again, we volunteer a lot. Times are tight for a lot of families. If you have the ability, please stop at the Level Ambulance or Level Dr. Road, Havertagh Grace Ambulance Corps, and donate a toy for tots. Unravel Present will make a family joy for a lot of young kids. So if you have the ability to do it, please do so. That's my comments for tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Ring Sager?
Mr. Mayor, I've talked enough tonight. No comment.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Ring Sager. Councilmember Boyer? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for listening in today. So the day of Thanksgiving was an absolutely amazing day. And, and the Spiritus service that prevailed through Havertagh Grace was absolutely unbelievable. Over a hundred and thirty turkeys were cooked for our community, friends and neighbors who were in need. Delivered around sixteen hundred meals that day. And the volunteers came out. We were very nervous that we would have enough volunteers to make it work, but everybody came out and we delivered every last meal. We ended up unfortunately running out of food at the very end. And there's still a couple of people in line waiting for food, unfortunately. But with sixteen hundred meals, it's just, it was absolutely unbelievable. We had a small group of people who worked inside. Again, council president, thank you so much for coming out and volunteering. You could see that it's just an amazing group of people who, at, at the very end, I think everybody was a little extremely tired of doing the same motion over and over again. Outside, we had the volunteers who stayed within their vehicles and waited for their turn to pick up their cards, deliver the meals. And then we had wonderful stories about people receiving the meals all over the county, Hartford County, and also into Cecil County. It's absolutely amazing. I want to thank everyone who volunteered, everyone who donated. And I want to highly encourage you to seriously consider making this part of your tradition for Thanksgiving because it's, it truly is what makes Havertagh Grace a very special place in our, in our community, in our county. I want to give major kudos to Fred Wills and Mr. Don Osman. They are just amazing at putting this on. They've got it to a, a scientific approach. Our restaurants in town for all their donations, Coakley's and River City, I think I got that one right, formerly known as Larben. And also want to thank the county council president for coming out and doing hours and hours of work, helping to cut down the turkeys and helping create the gravy and everything else. Patrick and Cindy, thank you very much for coming out. I have a, a bit of business that I want to put forward. Councilwoman Robertson and I, and actually Jimmy as well, we were here for a meeting and Mount Zion Baptist Church came in with a proposal of something that they would like to do with their church facilities. They are moving to Aberdeen for space reasons. And they're keeping their property here in Havertagh Grace. And they want to make sure that, that they continue their, their mission to serve the community and keep this property. So I'm passing out to you today. Let me pass that that way. Patrick, you can have these copies here. They would like to create a short-term homeless program focused on women. I propose that we amend our conditional uses for the RO district with the following motion. I'll wait for it to go around. Okay, the motion is to add at my, or at H, the following words. Homeless shelter programs meeting the following conditions. Short-term dash less than ninety days, limited bed, no more than twenty-five beds, five oh one C-three faith-based, faith-based community organizations. I would also propose that we take this opportunity to correct the spelling of the word specification found on lines B, D, and G. And that is my motion to add that text and to make the spelling corrections.
A second?
This is a form of a motion?
Yes.
Oh, you're changing a law. So you'd have to do a first reading and all that stuff, right?
I propose that we put it in to the, to the hover, yes.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Council President.
I applaud the effort of Mount Zion moving forward to help out the homeless. But when we introduce something like this, it's gotta come in a form of a legislation that has been vented through the key stakeholders, but more importantly, the city attorney. I'm led to believe the city attorney hasn't been.
I showed it to the city attorney and the city attorney, I'll let her speak, but she does need to do a formal review on it, yes.
I indicated, Ms. Boyer, that I would have to check the legal sufficiency of the language, but I didn't know that she was gonna propose it as a specific amendment to the zoning code. That has to be done by ordinance and then it requires certain notice requirements. So, I mean, I, that would involve getting that ordinance drafted and on the agenda and following the proper notice procedures.
Yeah, because we couldn't, we couldn't begin to vote on something like this without the public knowing about it ahead of time, being on the agenda and like in an ordinance, per se, so.
You're correct in that regard, that if, if it's voted on tonight, it would only be voted on, it would be a, just a motion to proceed. And the actual amendments would have to go through the ordinance process, if that makes sense.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, sir.
Would we need to table the, table the motion? Or if it fails?
So let me ask Councilmember Boyer real quick. So what you're proposing is to amend conditional uses to add homeless shelter programs. So this would, in essence, tonight be the first reading and introduction of this law, right?
I put it on the table for what is the most appropriate way to go through it. I thought it would have been to make the motion for first reading. That was what I was led to believe. But that said, if there's a better way to make this happen.
Well, what I would suggest, what I would suggest, only because this deals with zoning, is to hand this to the council president and tell him to put it on the next council meeting agenda. That would give the public an opportunity, not only to comment on public hearing the second read, but to comment on the first read, should they choose to comment. It, it's just a little cleaner that way, you know what I'm saying? And that gives also the city attorney to make sure that your language is proper. But, I mean, like I said, any council member has a right to introduce legislation whenever they want. I'm only suggesting this for public transparency, since this would change a law, that they have a little, that have more notice, if, if you would take that route. I mean.
No, I'm fine with that. So I'll amend my motion that I move that we put it on the agenda for the next meeting, for that amendment.
Provided the legislation's in, in place. I mean, it's gotta be in, in terms of ordinance and it's not there yet. I can't put, I can't put an ordinance on the agenda until the ordinance is actually drafted.
Okay. And, but then I think we also need to come back and explain to the community that that's what happened. So, yeah, that's fine. And I can do that during my, my comments next time.
Okay.
All right, so what are we doing?
Okay, so I make a motion that we pursue for the agenda for next meeting and ordinance to amend the conditional uses of the RO district to say homeless shelter programs meeting the following conditions. Short-term dash less than ninety days, limited bed, no more than twenty-five beds, five oh one C-three faith-based community organization to, at line H, and to change this, correct the spelling of specification found three times within that section.
Okay, I would caution you, though, by making a motion to put something on the agenda, you are putting the council members on the spot by voting yes for something they may inherently vote no for. I mean, it's almost a de facto vote on it. And so what I would just suggest is just asking the council president or the mayor to put it on the agenda, which we would do. Does that make sense?
That's fine, if that's.
Because, because by having them vote for something on the agenda, it's a, because what if they vote, what if three votes say, "No, I don't want to vote to put something on the agenda, it's not our process." And then all of a sudden it kills it. See what I'm saying? So I don't want to see it get killed. I want to see it be debated and deliberated. Because you may have three council members that say, "I don't think we should take a, a public vote just to put something on the agenda." And, and that would kill it and you can't. So what I would say is just publicly say, "Council," here's my proposed language, and I'm publicly asking the mayor or the council president to put this on the agenda for the next meeting or whatever meeting that I, I wanted on. And that would have worked that way. Now, I would also say, again, because I believe every council member has a right to legislate. I'm talking in theory. Of course, we will do that. But I also say, if it's not, doesn't take place, and let's say, in theory, nobody puts it on the agenda, that would be a different story where you could go ahead and do a first reading like that. But I would say just the cleanest thing is to say, "Hey, can you put this on next agenda?" That way the public has a chance to see it and everyone has first reading, public hearing, and second reading, the comment on, should they choose to do so. So, when I say it makes sense, like if you make a motion to vote on, put on the agenda, what if it's three-three? You know, and then, then it never goes on the agenda. Does that make sense? I'm just saying I wouldn't make a vote to put on the agenda.
Okay.
And, and I can't speak for anybody else, but I know that when I review legislation, I look for the comments that come from the key stakeholders like directors. I look for legal sufficiency from the city attorney. And until I would be able to see that, I couldn't say with confidence that we're ready to move forward yet. You know, I think we need to see that so that we could all make informed decisions. It's just, you know, I mean, you say you ran it by the city attorney, but, but that didn't happen till late tonight, you know? And I think, I would have seen with the legislation, the legislation has to be drafted. And it has to be staffed appropriately through city hall before we're ready to put anything on the agenda.
Can, can I just add? I, she ran it by me just tonight before the meeting. I didn't have time to really review it. So that's why I said it, it still had to be reviewed for legal sufficiency.
Right.
Councilmember Robertson?
Hey. Well, not to get too far into the weeds again on something, but I, I guess, so we're not, we're not really, I mean, the only thing that could be considered legislation is that this would take an ordinance to amend an ordinance? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
So by introducing this tonight, this would technically be the first reading of an ordinance. You would assign it a number if it were approved for introduction. Is that correct?
Technically speaking, if, if that was to take place, it would be considered a first reading and we'd have to have a public hearing.
With it, right, before having the second reading for the amendment? Because I think part of the issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that with the winter months upon us and the weather getting colder, I think some of the concern is trying to get this together as quickly as possible. Because if we wait till next meeting, that would put us into January by the time that we're able to actually do the second reading and then, and, and the public hearing and then forty-five days after that. So, you know, you're heading into springtime. I think that was the, I think that's why we're seeing this tonight. But, um, you know, I, it, it probably should have gone to everyone ahead of time. I think that's just a learning curve and process.
Well, and Jason, I, I understand where you're coming from, but we can't have anything, at least in my mind, for first reading until the language has been reviewed for legal sufficiency and that hasn't been done yet.
Well, I disagree with you when you say we can't. I mean, we can, you know? And then it would be part of your due diligence and all of ours as council members to get the city attorney's position, to get all the staff members' positions. I mean, you can't say you can't do that. I mean, we're the legislative body, we can. We can introduce something. And then prior to the second reading or as part of the due diligence of the council members, you know, have legal sufficiency and all that stuff taken care of on the back end. I mean, you can.
And.
I'm not saying you should, I'm just saying you can.
And, and the one thing that you gotta keep in mind is, is we're putting the public at a disadvantage. because, you know, if you have the first reading, you take them completely out of the chance to, to read in, you know, with comments, because they didn't know it was coming, you know. I, again, I applaud Mount Zion wanting to move forward, but I want to make sure that we as a dais, and we as a legislative body, do the right thing for the right reasons. And, you know, I personally would never, ever vote for anything for first reading without knowing what legal sufficiency it is, without knowing that impact. And that's just, that's, I can't speak for anybody else, but that's me, you know. And so when you say we can't, you know, I, I guess we could do anything, but, you know, I think the fact that we put the public at a disadvantage by not letting them to comment on the first reading, and the fact that we didn't have legal sufficiency ahead of time before the introduction, I think that's just a, a major oversight on this dais, if we did that.
Councilmember Zinner?
Thank you.
I'll get next to you, Dave, sorry.
I just have, have a question in terms of how were the conditions determined? Because when we did the legislation for the assisted living, I, I'm just wondering how we came to these numbers. We, we talked about the square footage, for example, of the facility for assisted living. I don't see anything there, but I see less than ninety days, and then I see no more than twenty-five beds. I, I just think it needs to be flushed out more too, as well, in terms of.
Right, and, and that is based off of conversations with the Mount Zion. We walked the premises, we discussed, we, Jason and Jimmy, well, Jimmy didn't, Jason and I walked through the premises, we also had a meeting with Mount Zion, and they made it very clear that they wanted it to be a short-term program, and they were looking for ninety days. When we walked through, it looked like they had around twenty beds ready and going up to twenty-five beds, and that's how that was determined there. After conversation with Jason, I don't believe our intent is to make it an extremely large program. We would like to see it something that's manageable, since it is in a residential area. But still, they have a wonderful facility, and they have a, a desire to pursue this as their mission.
Thank you.
Any more comments by council? So, Councilmember Martin, yes, sir?
This, and I kind of, in, on the line with the council president, I commend Councilmember Boyer's desire to work with the local community, I mean, it's fabulous. But without having the chance to have gone through the administration, without going through the legal process, and without actually having the ordinance written and reviewed, and giving the citizens a chance to make their comments on our first reading, this is one where, in good conscience, I would have to vote no on. And again, I don't want to see something fail just because, you know, we're looking at legal sufficiency, the wording, and, and being able to have discussions prior to going straight into a public work session. So, like I said, I, I want, I'd love to see it fast-tracked, but it's got to be done in such a manner that would be beneficial to all the community and allow all of the community to make a public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringziger?
If I can offer advice, both the mayor and the council president have offered in good faith to put it on the agenda. I see that it would likely fail tonight if, and you haven't received a second on the motion. I might suggest, if it were me, I would withdraw the motion and properly format it into the standard that we have with the other codes, run it by the, the department heads, and put it in the read file, and have the city attorney look at it, and I think all our questions will be answered, and we'll have a two-week delay, which actually won't be that bad. But I think we could probably proceed a little bit easier that way, but barring that, I think it would fail tonight if it were to go forward.
First of all, I need to say that I respect the points of view of all my, my colleagues. But I want to remind us that we are the legislative body, and it's up to us to make the rules on how we're going to proceed moving forward. If this is the path that we're going to use, then I expect it to be the path for everything. So I'd be happy to remove my motion and have this to be the process that we're going to use moving forward. That said, I do not like it when things get stuck in admin committee, or things get changed in admin committee, without the person who is putting the legislation forward, their thoughts, or comments, or points of view. So my expectation is that there'll be camaraderie and respect on how that goes. And that's it. I, I believe that we can move past the issue of legal sufficiency, and I think it is something that we can look for a way to make this happen for our community, so that our community members can pursue the mission that they, that they choose. So I remove the motion, and I ask favorably to the council president to consider it moving forward. And I would ask for assistance from the administration to put it in the format that is pleasing to the council president.
Councilmember Boyer, we'll make sure that it's on whatever meeting you want it to be on.
Thank you.
But I also wanted to say that I hope you don't take it just the wrong way. But I, I, I always stick up for the rights of legislatures. I was a council member for seven years, and no council president or mayor should ever stifle a legislator from putting something on the agenda. And if that ever happens, then absolutely have the right to bring it up under your comments, because you should never, you should never be told you can't do anything. The only reason I just cautioned the process is because this is a zoning law. Like, if you wanted to propose a new committee, or a, you know, tax break for somebody, I mean, but I just feel, being such a small community, this deals with people, it's a residential area, this deals with people's lives, and I just think probably the best process when dealing with zoning is always to give as much ample notification as we can. So, so we will work on this as quickly as we can.
With your assistance, that'd be wonderful. We unfortunately did not have that assistance moving in the beginning part.
I'm sorry, what?
I, we did not have that assistance available to us when we met. We were told it was something that would have to come from council.
Okay. Well, you have access to, oh, I can tell you right now that the city's position is against this, okay? And the planning department's against this. This is putting, you know, you could call it a halfway house, or you could call it a homeless shelter, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And that's why currently it's not zoned for it. And I know there's going to be a lot of people not happy with the placement of it, and so the city's against this. However, the city attorney is your city attorney as well, and she can help you draft whatever ordinance you want. And I promise you, it'll be on any meeting agenda you want. If you want it on the next meeting agenda, we'll make sure it's on the next meeting agenda.
I appreciate it.
That's your right as a council member, okay?
Thank you.
And we'll work together to get it done. Okay, admin committee or no admin committee, it'll be on the agenda. Thank you. Are we withdrawing the motion to vote on?
Yeah, I withdraw the motion. And I wish everyone a happy Hanukkah.
Any further comments, Councilmember Boyer? Okay. We're going to move on to Councilmember Zinner, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, citizens. I just have a, a couple items that I wanted to mention. I had been talking about the grant that the Historic Harbor to Grace Foundation had been requesting from the Maryland Historic Trust. We did not get, receive that grant. They only had $300,000 available for grants, and they had requests for over 1.5 million. But we're on the radar now. The foundation is new, and it gave us an opportunity to put our toe in the water, so to speak, and put forth our first application for a grant. So we will pick up where we left off in the new year and look for other opportunities to put forward maybe the same proposal, or maybe we'll look at something different. But I just wanted to let people know that that, that grant did not go through. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, we're always talking about how wonderful our volunteers are and our commissions, and I really want to commend the Independence Day Commission members. Everyone has had fundraisers canceled this year, so our nonprofits are not as, they don't have the, the money maybe that they had last year to, to do their work and to follow their mission. But the Independence Day Commission, and they, they really kind of fell right in the forefront of the initial COVID restrictions. They canceled the gala, they canceled the carnival, of course, the parade was canceled. And they just recently canceled Howie Jolly Christmas. But they did come together, and they did think about the other nonprofits in town. And they're starting a donation opportunity for anyone who is in a position to contribute, and it's $20 for 2020. And what they're asking our citizens to do is to donate $20 to one of the local nonprofits, and they've set up a page, it's pound sign 20 for 2020, Helping Harbor to Grace, pound 20 for 2020. But I would encourage everyone to go on to the Independence Day Commission Facebook page, because they're highlighting different local nonprofits on that page, and giving a little bit of a description of what they do. This week, they're highlighting primarily the museums in town. And you can donate to any of these nonprofits that you want, but you can just go into that, there's a link there that will take you to the donation page, and you can identify which nonprofit, or you could do it for Harbor to Grace special projects. So I just wanted to bring that up and encourage anyone who is capable of donating to look at the page and maybe pick out a nonprofit that touches your heart, and donate $20 for this season especially, since so many of the fundraisers that our commissions do and our citizens do have been canceled this year, and it would certainly be helpful. So that's my comments for this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Zinner, appreciate your comments. I'd like to go to Councilmember Robertson, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I moved to introduce, no, I'm just kidding. Just want to thank everybody that was able to attend November seventeenth. Harbor to Grace Youth Commission had the first virtual town hall, the emphasis being on civic service. And, you know, it was, I thought it was pretty good. I mean, it was the first time we pulled it together. All the council was there, all the directors were, were there. You know, we had some youth involved and some commission members, so I was very, very thankful for, for everyone's, you know, participation and, and quick work, and thankful for the team that put that together, Jeff Thompson and Adam Ribzinski with the city. You know, thank you guys for all that you do and for helping out with that. And that's it. I just hope that everybody is staying healthy, everybody's, you know, getting along all right, and just remember that we're all in this thing together. Have a good one.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Business from Council President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Officer Dan Pets and his wife Ashley, who brought a little girl into the world tonight. So we wish the Pets family all the best, and, you know, that's some good news.
Yeah, some good news.
I want to piggyback what, what Casey said earlier, and send out my personal congratulations to Fred Wills, Don Osmond, and the, the entire Thanksgiving Day dinner team. I mean, she said it all best. I mean, it was a great event, a great event. I mean, I remember Don Osmond got me involved many, many years ago, and once you get involved, you can't help but want to go back year after year. And to see the number of people that showed up despite COVID, despite all the challenges that COVID has brought, it just blows you away. I mean, it, I mean, it was just like, they had more than enough volunteers, you know, and you know, when you talk to Bruce Clark and Willie Norrie, and how they orchestrated cooking 135 turkeys. I mean, that's a huge event. I mean, and, you know, and again, they still ran out, you know. So it truly serves as inspiration to all of the municipalities of what we do year after year, and to, to the entire committee, I got to say Rich Hollywood would have been proud. Rich Hollywood would have really, really been proud, and, and it's once again, Harbor to Grace leading by example. So again, thanks for all your efforts, and your tireless dedication and selfless service didn't go unnoticed. My thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Paul Sarbanes. We, we found out today that Paul Sarbanes passed away. He's a longtime U.S. Senator, but really, he was also a big-time champion for the Chesapeake Bay. And, you know, again, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. But much closer to home, it, it really hit hard this week, or last week. You know, first off, Russell Bo Barnes passed away. Anybody that knew, knew Russell knew that he was a graduate of Harbor to Grace High School. He walked in the footsteps of his dad because he became a custodian at Harbor to Grace Elementary School. And to know Bo was still love Bo. I mean, you couldn't help but fall in love with him, and, and if, if anybody ever, ever questioned that, all you have to do is ask the kids at Harbor to Grace Elementary. They just loved Mr. Russell. And my thoughts and prayers go out to his family, and Bo, I'm really going to miss your smile. If that wasn't enough, not long after that, I heard that Tim West passed away. Tim and I grew up together in the same neighborhood on Anderson Avenue. We played capture the flag, we played all kinds of sports. He was an individual that was very, very active in the Sons of American Legion, I think he was a first-place commander. No matter what the situation, Timmy always found a way to make you laugh. And it's, it was a tremendous loss to, to the West family. He, without a doubt, would be sorely missed. And with that being said, it seems like that 220, I mean, the year 2020 has been a really tough year for all of us. COVID and the stress it bestows on all of us has truly changed our lives. And I think it's fair to state that many of us have lost friends and family to that unfortunate crisis that we're facing. I thought about this, and, Mr. Mayor, I think in talking to Councilmember Robertson, that we should end the year 2020 in reflection, and maybe take a weekend and light the town up in memory of all those people that lost their lives during the year. I also ran it by Casey tonight, and she even proposed that maybe the night of the duck drop, we have a lights-out for a few minutes, you know, in memory of all those that really, truly lost their lives, and it'll send a strong message to the families that their lives were forgotten. So I make a motion to light the town up and have a lights-out on New Year's Eve, and I put that up for Catholic consideration.
So, what color?
I didn't come up with a color. I mean, what color do you want to get?
Okay, well, why don't we just put, why don't we just put it this way? You move that New Year's Eve, the city of Harbor to Grace will, will, will light the town in
Okay.
in memoriam of those who we lost this year, and we'll do a moment of, we'll do a lights-out before the duck drop. How's that sound?
Sounds great.
We'll, we'll figure out.
I'll second that motion.
What's that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay, the city will honor in memoriam our friends and families who have passed this year on New Year's Eve by use of its uplight, and we will have a moment of, we'll have a lights-out moment of observance before the duck drop. Okay, fair enough. Did I capture that right? Thanks, Council President. fair enough. Did I capture that right? Thanks, Council President.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go to item number 18, comments from citizens. Mr. Seipolt, have we received any submissions from citizens on general business?
No, sir. No submissions since 7:00.
No, sir. No submissions since 7:00 o'clock this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Seipolt. I do want to just say on a positive note, former city council member Randy Craig had a son born on December 3rd, James Emerson Craig. And I want to congratulate Randy and Aaron and the Craig family on the new addition to their family. It's a cute little healthy boy, so I'm very happy for, for Randy. Apparently they, they didn't want to know the sex of the baby, so it was a big surprise. So I'm sure Randy's very happy. But on even bigger note, I just found out the, the Washington Football Team beat the Pittsburgh Steelers 23 to 17. Ending the domination of the Pittsburgh Steelers' season this year, and puts Washington football on a track to win the division. So I know I'm gonna hear it tomorrow from all my Steeler fans. Sorry about that, Steeler fans, I decided to, I mean, they shouldn't say anything because they beat the Ravens twice this year, but Washington, yeah, Washington Football Team snuck up, snuck up on them, right? So that could be a good omen for 2021. Okay, everybody, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by everyone?
Seconded by, right, everyone.
Seconded by, okay. I'll go, motion by Councilmember Martin, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn is approved, 6-0 and affirmative. The time is now 9:11. Thank you very much, council, for a good meeting.